Well, hello. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Formal Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Saleh.
Yeah.
Teague.
Here. And I want to welcome everyone that's here in person and those that are virtually joining us. Welcome to your City Hall. We're going to go to Proclamations. Proclamation 2A is the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and Asian American Pacific Islander Day Against Bullying. Whereas May is Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and whereas the API community is the fastest-growing racial group in America, and today is an important moment to recognize not only our longtime communities, but also our newcomers. And whereas the APA community has been marked by a struggle for freedom, equality, and justice, prevailing over the adversity of exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities. And whereas May 18th is the birthday of Vincent Chin, who was brutally murdered in a hate crime in 1982. His murder fueled a National Asian American Activists Movement that continues to this day. And whereas we have seen a staggering rise in bullying, discrimination, and hate crimes against the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas 80% of Asian American youth report being bullied online or in school due to cultural, religious, and linguistic barriers that can keep these youths from seeking and receiving help. And whereas in honor of Vincent Chin's birthday, May 18th, shall be an API Day Against Bullying and Hate. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 to be Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 18th, 2024 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Day Against Bullying in Iowa City. The City of Iowa City is committed to this important issue and encourages the public to foster dialogue, share resources, and learn more about what they can do to fight hate. And to receive this, we have several individuals. We have Nali, President of Eastern Iowa Chapter of the Asian and Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Association, and she has some other people with her as well.
Asian Americans and Pacific Americans are some of the fastest-growing populations in eastern Iowa, but we are underrepresented when vital decisions are made. API Heritage Month is an opportunity for the City of Iowa City to recognize the rich history and culture and the positive contributions of Asian and Pacific Islander communities. And it's an opportunity for people to learn about Asian and Pacific Islander cultures and traditions, especially in light of the rise in hate crimes and bullying against Asian and Pacific Islander communities. I remember that the City of Iowa City made an AAPI Day Against Bullying on May 18th, 2021, when the hate crime against Asian and Pacific Islanders reached the peak. We are grateful that the city stood up for us and recognized the cultural and historical significance of API Month in 2024 and expressed its deepest appreciation for Asian and Pacific Islander communities in this city and all individuals who commemorate this significant occasion.
Thank you.
And so his name is Edward Lee. He's the representative of youth from our community. He's now a West High School student, but he took math class in university. Very talented future mathematician.
All right.
And my name, everybody knows. My name is Nali. I'm the President of Asian American Pacific Islander Public Affairs in Eastern Iowa. I'd like to thank Mayor Teague and all City Council members for naming May 18th for the AAPI Day Against Bullying in support of Asian community, Vincent, and Native Huronian. And our mission is to advance Asian Pacific Islander communities through increased leadership and civic engagement. We greatly appreciate the city administration for your unfailing support of our advocacy. We will try our best to collaborate with other diverse organizations, public officials, and community leaders to create awareness and support to fight hate crimes, address racialism, and provide opportunities for our collective voices to be heard. Together, we are building a better world that is diverse, inclusive, and with representation from all voices and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is this the other young gentleman that was going to speak?
Okay, so this is Michael Lee.
Welcome. All right, welcome.
Noah, thank you for having me today. I really appreciate all of you taking the time out of your busy schedules to help represent the Asian community. So I remember the day that I moved here, and at the time, I was new to this community. But you know, after staying here, I truly believe that Iowa City has become a home to me. Because Iowa City has made an AAPI Day Against Bullying on May 18th in 2021, when the hate crimes against Asian and Pacific Islanders reached a peak. We are grateful that the city sand up for us and recognizes the cultural and historical significance of AAPI Month in 2024 and expresses its deepest appreciation for Asian and Pacific Islander community in this city and all individuals who celebrate this significant occasion. Thank you all.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you for coming to speak here. All right. We're going to move on to item 2B, which is Missing and Murder Indigenous Women's Day, whereas Indigenous women go missing and are murdered at rates higher than any other ethnic group in the United States. And whereas the National Center for Disease Control reports that homicide is a leading cause of death for Indigenous women and girls. And whereas an accurate count of how many Indigenous women are affected is difficult to determine, making the scope of the epidemic uncertain. And whereas Indigenous women are worthy of personal sovereignty and equal protection under the law. And whereas the City of Iowa City stands with Indigenous communities in condemning and preventing acts of violence and discrimination, and we commit to ensuring opportunities exist for generations to come. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2024, to be Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women's Day and encourage all community members to observe, recognize, and encourage collective action to bring the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women's Day and this crisis to an end. I'm going to ask at this time that Sakawas Nobis, who is, I believe, virtually, she's going to accept this at this time. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out, can I come off screen? Can I come on screen?
You're not on screen.
Oh, and that's what I'm asking. Can I do that?
We don't have the ability to bring you up on screen.
Oh, that's, okay, that's fine. I thought I was missing something.
Yes, no, welcome. We can hear you.
I thank you again. I want to say thank you again to the City of Iowa City for doing this work. And I, you know, want to say that, you know, that we have a small Indigenous population here in this city. It is a very important population. We are the original peoples of these lands. And I want to pay respect to the Iowai and the Muskwaki, whom, you know, Iowa City, whose lands Iowa City is built on. And that there's the Missing and Murdered, and we call it relatives, Great Plains Action Society, our organization, we call it Missing Murdered Indigenous Relatives, because it's more inclusive of people that are non-binary, and also because our men and boys also go missing at extraordinarily, and are murdered at extraordinarily high rates as well. And I want to ask the city to, you know, consider moving forward, doing more than just proclamations. As a proclamation is nice, because, you know, it gets the word out there, but, you know, actions speak louder than words. And there are so many issues surrounding the MMIR issue that people don't realize that are, you know, greatly connected, such as loss of land, land theft, that's, you know, greatly related to the MMIR crisis, you know, sex trafficking, you know, even suicide is very much part of this whole issue. And so, you know, it's places like Iowa City that are more progressive, where you could possibly take, you know, greater steps into truth and reconciliation of, you know, how Indigenous peoples got into this issue in the first place. It's been happening since, you know, the day that Columbus set foot on these shores. It's a 530-something-plus-year crisis. And honestly, it doesn't seem to be getting better. And, you know, we could do, we could do more here. We could, you know, be, we could be on the leading edge of making real change by rematriating land, by creating space for Indigenous peoples here. You know that Iowa saying, if they build it, they will come. You know, one of the reasons why there is not a high Indigenous population here is because there is no attraction for Indigenous peoples to be here necessarily. Yet, the Muskwaki Nation is so close by. You know, yet, you know, this is the land of the Iowai, who have been, you know, were basically herded off here and genocided so that this city could be built. And so, you know, I would like to see, you know, leadership take more action in creating programs to have more Indigenous people be here and create, you know, more of a community and more opportunities for Indigenous peoples to want to be here, you know. And as a leader of the Indigenous community myself, I'm the Executive Director of Great Plains Action Society. I would be more than happy to help with that. And, you know, we've been doing a lot of that work for years already. The university has done some of that work as well, and I feel like there's a great foundation to start building already on that. So I feel like if we really want to cut down on the crisis, it starts by not just acknowledging it, but taking action. So thank you very much. And I believe Abigail Buffalo is there to accept the proclamation. I'm sorry I couldn't be there. I'm actually in another meeting right now and stepped out to do this. So again, thank you on behalf of the Indigenous community.
Thank you. And is Abby Buffalo here? Okay, I don't see Abby. Well, thanks to Sakawas for joining us today. We're going to move on to the next proclamation, which is the 2C National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals of the Iowa City Public Works Department focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the sustainability and resilient community and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the City of Iowa City. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of our public works professionals who are responsible for maintaining, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, building, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community members. And whereas, it is in the public's interest for the community members and civic leaders to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in Iowa City. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, the theme is Advancing Quality of Life for All. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to May 25th, 2024, to be National Public Works Week in Iowa City and urge all community members and civic organizations to recognize the substantial contributions which public works professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And to receive this is the Public Works Director, Ron Kenoki.
Mayor Teague and Council, good evening. I am Ron Kenoki, Public Works Director. On behalf of the 160 Public Works employees in the Iowa City Public Works Department, I would like to thank you for this National Public Works Week proclamation and your support of the Public Works Department. The dedicated professionals who work in our engineering, equipment, resource management, streets, wastewater, and water divisions exemplify this year's theme, Advancing Quality of Life for All. Whether providing the everyday services made challenging by material shortages, responding to extreme weather events, or water main breaks, the Public Works Department is ready and here to serve our community. This year, we will showcase the Iowa City Wastewater Treatment Plant with an open house on Saturday, May 18th. We invite all community members to stop by between 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM for a tour of the wastewater plant at 4366 Napoleon Lane Southeast. We will have vehicles and equipment from the Iowa City fleet on display with a Touch a Truck event, educational opportunities, and awesome refreshments. The Public Works Open House event will be the kickoff to National Public Works Week in Iowa City, and we look forward to hosting you and the community at the wastewater treatment plant. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on with our Consent Agenda, which is items number three through seven. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Mo, seconded by Dunn. All right. And anyone from the public like to address any topic that is on our Consent Agenda, items three through seven? If you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one in...
We didn't get a chance to pull anything out because of work session. Can we ask to pull something out?
You can.
Or just make a comment on it?
You can make a comment if you want. Okay. Seeing no one in person or online to discuss any public discussion. We're going to go to council discussion.
Do you want to go first, Meehan?
Yeah. I just wanted to note on item 6B to congratulate Matthew Monsivas and Eva Martinez to become our new University of Iowa liaisons. So happy to acknowledge you.
Great, great.
And Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if I could get some additional information about 6J? Just a little bit of details for me and for the benefit of the public about the grant agreement with Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County for building acquisition and renovation.
Great. I see Tracy Heishu coming up, so... Welcome.
The grant agreement is for $2 million, the nonprofit capital fund that we provided funds for. The first was Free Medical Clinic. This is Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County. They will use the $2 million to acquire, they will expand their services. Right now, they're in Pheasant Ridge and Broadway. They'll expand to the Towncrest neighborhood. They are able to buy two buildings, one for their Family Resource Center that will house their admin, their family support workers, have conference and training rooms. That building needs minimal renovations. They'll be able to move that one. The other one is the Arthur Street one, which will be their early education childhood center. So that will have five licensed childcare rooms. They'll have about at least 50 childcare slots. There'll be a library, a multipurpose room with kitchen, playground. And so the project is much more than $2 million, so they will get a construction or user loan reserves in order to start. While they'll occupy the Family Resource Center, probably this summer, the Family Resource Center will probably take over a year. But they plan on getting the construction loan to make up the difference and then rehab that facility, and it is owned appropriately.
Do you know how many additional children they can have there if they did this?
At the Arthur Street, they, at least 50 childcare slots.
That's great. And also, being my district, I know that neighborhood well, and that'll be a welcome addition to the Towncrest neighborhood. So really glad to see the city's doing this.
You know, we have three Invest Health neighborhoods, and this is our third one. So for them to outreach and enter into this neighborhood, it's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Tracy, I did have just one follow-up question. The two different buildings, the kind of administrative offices and then the early childhood education center. So you mentioned the phrase Family Resource Center, and we've had some kind of community conversations about Family Resource Center. That's a different project than this one, correct?
They're two separate buildings.
No, I mean, other organizations are involved in something that we've been calling a Family Resource Center. That's, which is a different, different services, different kind of thing.
This will basically house their family support workers just with Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County. And they'll provide like English as a second language or different support services from that site.
Great. So that's the NCJC exclusively in that site. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Further, we're at council discussion, so sorry. Any other comments by council? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Alter.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at 7 to 0. Item number eight is Community Comment. This is an opportunity for those in the community to come and give a comment. The public comment is intended so that members of the public may be heard by council, because Community Comment is for items not properly noticed on the agenda. Counsel cannot engage in discussion or debate due to open meeting laws. And I'm going to invite people up at this time. There is a sign-in that you can do at the podium, but we also have stickers in the back of the room, which we encourage people to fill out, and you can drop that sticker in the basket when you approach. We're going to allow for, I want to see the hands of everyone that wants to speak. All right? We're going to allow for three minutes. Welcome.
Used to be five minutes. I remember that. Three minutes. It's hard to write a three-minute song. As a musician, I can attest to that. Encouraging people to think globally, act locally, I would like to bring up that despite that the people polled in the United States did not want to ship arms to Taiwan, to Kiev regime in Ukraine, and to Israel, that the Congress did what it does and made a bipartisan agreement and voted for all these arms to be shipped out, $95 billion. And reminds me of George Carlin saying, he said, "Whenever you hear the word bipartisan, we are probably going to be doubly screwed." George Carlin, I think, is telling the truth. And I think that it also reminds me of when we had Desert Storm, which was 1991. We basically attacked Iraq under the pretense that they were doing something wrong, or they were brutalizing Kuwait, which they were not really, and we gave the okay for them to do so. I remember during the Super Bowl in 1991, there was a halftime, and the halftime had soldiers marching, and it had Marines and Air Force marching at halftime. And George H.W. Bush came out of the, on the Jumbotron, and he said, "Things are going really well out in Iraq." And the whole thing was treated like a football game. And there were Desert Storm trading cards. Maybe some of you are old enough to remember that. Maybe some of you collected those cards. And it reminded me of that, and then 10 years later, we invaded Iraq again. And that was on the pretense of weapons of mass destruction. And actually, there were no weapons of mass destruction, but our government kept telling us there were, and the media told us there were. And the think tanks and the State Department kept telling us this line. But the same thing is happening today. We are sending weapons to China so that we can, to Taiwan, so that we can decouple it with China. We send weapons to Kiev because we wanted it to decouple from Russia, which Ukraine and Russia are like siblings. We send weapons to Israel so that we can control the Middle East. Joe Biden in 1986 said that if Israel did not exist, we would have to create an Israel to take care of U.S. interests in that region. The only reason why the U.S. is in Taiwan and in Ukraine is to have those as military regions to broaden their U.S. economics. Half a million people in Ukraine right now are dead because U.S. wanted to send billions of arms in there. You know, my professor, Howard Zinn, said, "They complain that we're disturbing the peace, but there is no peace. They're mad because we're disturbing the war, and we have to continue to do it."
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, my name's Kealan Shannon.
Oh, you don't have to take that off the sticker. You can just throw it in there. Sorry about that.
Thank you. My name's Kealan Shannon. I'm from Iowa City. I'm here because I've been a bus rider for three years, commuting to and from UIHC, Maine Hospital, from the city high area of Court Street, five days a week, and pretty consistently over the years. It's my main form of transportation to work. This has worked really well over the years, but recently, I've learned that the Oak Crest Route, which is one of the busiest routes in the city, will be reduced to half the current peak schedule starting this summer. And that will leave it running only every 30 minutes, on the hour and the half hour, as opposed to every 15 minutes it currently runs during these peak times. And I'm glad that the reductions aren't being made more, but I do worry that this change will increase those, will increase those riders' commute times, leaving them to have to rethink and replan their commutes to be able to make it to work on time. I have discussed these route changes with many other commuters who also take these routes, and they are also very concerned about these changes, but they could not be here tonight. So I'm speaking on Benny's behalf to make you aware of the issue that exists. And I strongly encourage other options be considered regarding the bus schedule reduction, senses, sorry, such as leaving the Oak Crest schedule as it is and reducing other routes which fewer riders rely on. Or instead of this planned route change, consider dropping the hour and half-hour Oak Crests, leaving the buses to run at 15 and 45 minutes after the hour, so riders are not waiting up to an hour commute times, waiting for the next connecting bus for over 20 minutes, where there is no covered shelters for riders waiting at either the Melrose Street bus stops or the downtown interchange. The mall doors do not open until later in the morning. And even when they are open, the mall does not want people standing around or window shopping, which leaves us riders standing out in the elements to wait for the next bus for long periods of time. I do know that riders can hop on a cam bus if it's available. Unfortunately, during the summer, those cam bus hours are greatly reduced for their schedules and routes as well. Therefore, it won't be much of an option for those commuting across town starting this summer. I urge you to not reduce the Oak Crest Route schedule. Though I do understand sometimes changes are necessary, I would encourage you to consider other options which would reduce disruptions for commuters. Again, I'm Kealan Shannon. I thank you all for your time and for hearing my concerns regarding this change. I appreciate you all and all that you do, and I trust that you will find a suitable solution to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Charlotte Washington-Hoglen-North Liberty.
I'm Leslie Fitzpatrick. I'm from Iowa City, and we're here today representing the Community Crisis Center. We want to first thank you for all of the support that you've provided to community and to the community as a whole. We're coming here today, though, because we are finding a huge disparity between what resources are currently available, both monetarily and in food needs at the Community Crisis Center and what our community at large actually needs.
Community provides food delivery, mobile pantry, and the open pantry for citizens here in Johnson County. And we provide these services to all of Johnson County, and the need has grown substantially, as you said, adding to the issue inflation... here in Johnson County, and we provide these services to all of Johnson County, and the need has grown substantially, as you said. Adding to the issue, inflation is weighing heavy. Can you speak to the mic, please? Adding to the issue is inflation, weighing on a lot of households in Iowa City, Johnson County, surrounding areas. The need will only increase during the summer months because there will be no free lunch programs for schoolchildren.
Currently, the need at the food bank is 40% down from what we have, so 39 pounds of food are served to families, 200 families a day. And if you think about a grocery cart, thanks, sorry, if you think about a grocery cart, it's approximately 200 pounds when we fill a grocery cart. So families are getting less food, less quality food, than what they are needing in order to thrive.
We respectfully ask city council to consider appropriating financial help beyond what you have given in the past. We are thankful and grateful for all that you've done, but we please ask you to consider this issue going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Michael Roberts, I am born and raised in Iowa City. I'm here today to speak to the council and urge you to adopt any measures that you can to support the trans community in Iowa City and Johnson County. With the fascist Kim Reynolds regime making, targeting, bullying, and denying medical care to trans Iowans, priorities of this legislative session, we need local county government officials to act as a bulwark against this fascist hateful legislation. In Iowa City, we like to congratulate ourselves, pat ourselves on the back, greatest city of the arts, we're a progressive island in a conservative oasis in Iowa. It's time that we act in accordance with our stated values and do something, anything, to support trans Iowans, pass measures supporting Iowa City as a trans sanctuary city, providing financial support to trans refugees migrating from other areas in the state to Iowa City, and do whatever we can to prove that we are the progressive beacon that we claim to be. Proclamations and yard signs are great, but they don't really do much to affect change or support the well-being of the trans community in the light of the discrimination it's facing. We, as a community, can do better, we should do better, and we must do better. You must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hello, my name is Belinda Bates, I have lived with my family in Iowa City since 1996, sent my two kids through City High, and I have two Hawkeyes in the family. I'm here to endorse the designation of 302-316 East Bloomington Street as a local historic landmark.
That'll be coming up.
Okay, so I should like sit down and wait?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have you sign in at that time. Thank you. All right, anyone else? Seeing no one else, we're going to end the public comment, thanks for everyone that shared. We're going to move on to planning and zoning matters. 9A is rezoning 302 through 316 East Bloomington Street, local historic landmark. Ordinance, rezoning property located at 302 through 316 East Bloomington Street from Central Business Service Zone to CBE 2 with a historic district overlay zone, and this is second consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Alter.
All right, and anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you are online and you want to address this, please raise your virtual hand. All right, and we'll have you sign in this time. Thank you.
Use your sticker.
All right, and I also wanted to see all the hands of individuals that wanted to speak on this topic. If you can raise your hand. All right, so I just see two individuals before me that wants to speak, so welcome.
Okay, once again, my name is Belinda Bates, and I'm here to endorse the designation of 302-316 East Bloomington Street as a local historic landmark. I'd like to mention that I've lived in various locations around the United States, I've lived in the central, the historic district of Philadelphia, and I have lived in a town on the West Coast that was a national historic landmark, the whole town was landmarked. And what I have observed is that landmark designations, whether they're, you know, on the local level or on the national level, are not just cultural assets. Old Brick is a wonderful thing, and it's great that it was saved, it's great that it serves the community. I think people wonder whether something is worth landmarking just on cultural grounds, and what I'd like to argue to you is that landmarking is of enormous economic benefit. A landmark building, a historic district attract upscale investment and development because people enjoy being in these places. They might not value them at the time, and someone who buys the property might see more immediate economic return in tearing the old building down, but what happens over time is that the value of the building, excuse me, the value of the building is recognized, and it becomes a magnet, really. The more buildings that can be preserved, the more the character of the town is preserved, it attracts investment, it promotes individuation of the town, which is really an issue, I think, in the Midwest, because so many, so much of the infrastructure and the architecture is really homogenous and essentially uninteresting. And this is really one chance that Iowa City has to preserve its character, and at the same time, for those of you who are the hard-headed financial types, to grow Iowa City's economic base. So I hope that you will listen and vote to landmark it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Lou Tacsonary, Iowa City. I've spoken to you all before on this issue, but I just had a few other observations I wanted to make. So first, the Sleazak Hall complex has long been recognized as significant. Specifically, over 30 years ago, Oxford University Press published a book entitled Buildings of Iowa, a work that was commissioned by the Society of Architectural Historians as part of their ongoing Buildings of the United States series. Of the 83 architecturally significant buildings mentioned at that time, only 15 were commercial or public. That is neither private residential nor part of the University of Iowa. Along with obvious entries such as the Carnegie Public Library, the Iowa Press Citizen Building, and the Johnson County Courthouse, was Sleazak Hall. That was in the early 90s by a very renowned and respected group of individuals who take architectural history seriously, and also published by a very prestigious press, Oxford University Press. Second, this particular complex is precisely the type of unique property that a growing consensus agrees warrants protection. For example, every year, the National Trust for Historic Preservation publishes a list of the 11 most endangered historic places. This year, they have chosen to highlight their continued commitment to telling what they're calling "The Full American Story," and the theme connecting their current list is directly relevant to your decision today regarding the Sleazak Hall complex, namely that it represents the power of communities to come together to combat erasure and protect cultural landmarks, treasured local businesses, restaurants, customs, and all traditions that help tell the layered stories of those who call the place home. By rallying around these places, that brings stories to life, communities are not only empowered by their unique pasts, but also safeguarding a sense of identity, continuity, and vitality for a future. It's as if they had Sleazak Hall in mind when they wrote this. Many times, folks in your position experience a clash between doing things right versus doing the right thing. In other words, following rules, procedures, policies, and norms, as opposed to doing what aligns with your personal values and moral compass. But there is no clash here. The Sleazak Hall complex should be officially recognized for what it has been, is, and will continue to be, one of a small, finite number of touchstones for the community. It is and always has been a landmark, you all simply need to acknowledge it. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to just take a show of hands, although we have time, anyone else wanting to speak? So this will be the last commenter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jay Honahan. I've been here before speaking to you, and I'm opposed that you guys designating this property on the historical landmark. Number one, the building, the main building which houses Palais Is Pizza's in, has been added on, couple additions, and number two, so the structure has changed a lot, and the other building, which is the laundromat, that's been changed, the structure on the outside has been changed, and the inside. I also would like to remind you that the property owner, you are going to hurt him financially if you designate the whole property as a historical landmark, and I guess I have one question. If you want to help him, why not designate the first half of the Palais Is building as a historical landmark and give him the back half of the building and plus the laundromat? And that might be a way to help him. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone that spoke on this. All right, we're going to move to council discussion.
I think it's made, it's been made clear in no uncertain terms that we're not able to parcel out this property when it comes to this designation. Its historicity is all encompassing, and in terms of, you know, the requirements to change the code and all sorts of other aspects, I mean, our legal counsel has advised that it is not possible. So the decision before us today is the whole property.
I'd just like to say very briefly, my thanks to, sorry, my thanks to Ms. Bates and Lou Tacsonary, apologies if I didn't get the pronunciation correct, for saying far more eloquently what has been going through my mind, the range from the history to the way in which buildings add to an identity of a town, to indeed its economic value. So I just want to thank you both because you said far better what I have been sort of grappling with and thinking about, so thank you for that, and now I'm going to be quiet.
I think, as I kind of mentioned last time, that I do see the importance of considering the property owner's rights, and in doing so, I know I place, and I think the code place is a pretty high bar that has to be achieved in order to designate something historic, and the burden of proof is squarely on those asking for that designation. But having listened to all of the presentations, the history of this, I think they hit that bar. I think they did a nice job presenting the historical context. Just as a strange point of reference, today I was talking to somebody as I was getting my lifesaving coffee, and they said, "So is there something about that building that's more than Palais Is?" And I said, "Well, actually, yes." And so I relayed some of the information, and they were like, "Oh, yeah, I guess that is historic property." And I was, you know, I told them, "You asked kind of the right question, right? Is there something more there?" And I think that, again, that the Historic Preservation Group, you know, had a high bar to hit, and in my mind, that that was achieved, and so I will be, again, voting in support of this designation.
I continue to be a strong supporter of this, and I'm sure you're all not surprised by that, and I just wanted to point out again that this is in line with our comprehensive plan and the work plans for historic preservation, to work hard to identify those very, very, very few gems we have left and save them.
Well, one, I want to say thanks to everyone that has spoke on this item. I think this year, this probably was one of the most, one of the items of where we got the most emails, at least for this year. Last year was City Park Pool. But this year, so there's been a lot of people reaching out and a lot of conversations happening, both not just at council level, but outside of council, so thanks to everyone that has spent some time with me, whether it's through your writing or through conversations that we've had one-on-one. You know, I have been in a position, and I've been very open here, about this being a phenomenal space, this property being, it has historic value, absolutely, without a doubt. We've seen it, we've heard it. A part of my challenge still is the, from my vantage point, is all the things that's around this. I voted in, you know, against the owner in the past, so that's not my issue, voting against the owner. That didn't want their property to be designated, that's not my issue, even though I empathize with anyone that has a property that is being considered, and they're not raising their hand to say, "Yes, I want this." I can, you know, and I've thought about this long and hard, I just don't see how, in this moment in time where I feel comfortable, you know, supporting this historic designation, it absolutely has some history to it, but when I think of the entire, the entirety of everything, I just am not comfortable, and unfortunately, I will be voting no against this designation.
Mayor, can I ask you why exactly? Like, I understand that you're not comfortable, but if I'm understanding our standard of view.
Yeah, so a few things is I don't want to risk the city being, there are some things that I think are high-risk, if I, you know, just share everything, and the city be put in the position to be sued, so I don't want to do that. I think I have, in the last meetings, some of those questions are where I'm not settled within myself to say yes to this designation. But again, I think, you know...
So it's not based on its historicity, though? I mean, that has been, it has been studied and by professionals, right? So it's about the designation, because there isn't really an argument that this is not historic. It is.
No, you're exactly right. It has high historic value, and I acknowledge that absolutely.
I think I share a lot of, like, agreement with the mayor on this. I know that the building is historic, the one that have, it's a place. My concern is really just like, this is who you ask for the, you know, from the owner. I know that this is historic, I want to vote for it to be historic and everything, but I really want to do something about it, like a big picture. As a council member, when we go to an owner and we ask for a building to become historic, that the city is going to the owner, which is, I consider this like the city's applicant, and the owner is a resident of Iowa City, who elected me to come here and just try to save them. I understand about historic, no doubt, but... I understand about historic, no doubt, but you just mentioned that, can we just do the front? And we cannot, right? We cannot do only the Palaeus Pizza.
Right, you need to, the application before you is for the whole property.
Is that because the application for the whole property, or because we cannot divide it?
We, the city certainly cannot divide it, only the property owner could do that and would...
I know, but...
Sorry?
Can the property owner divide it?
Not in its present configuration, no.
Not on this application. Anyway, I'm very tolerant on this, and I would like to ask the council to think like, really, you know, to think about, since we're going to have more application like this, I mean, Iowa City have a lot of nice building, and we will, they will become also historic, and we're going to have application like this. And since the city is the one who asking the owner to do this, can we come up with a program with incentive that we're going to give it to the, like, the owner of the building? So we can, because, for example, when the building become old, it's really, you know, it is really difficult to keep up with it. So, for example, we need to have, and this is for the council, really, we need to have maybe a line item on the budget for historic reservation, where, when we ask somebody, and if it's like somebody's become vulnerable and cannot take care of the building, and if they have majors who are, like, breaking down or anything, so the city will give incentive so that they can help. I just want to see if this could be a possibility, you know, to open the conversations in the future, and also to encourage the Historic Reservations Committee to come up with programs for, like, incentive from the, I know you have done this before, a long time ago, and we voted down, but I hope if we can do it again. And that's what I really want from the council. Are you guys interested of, like, discussion? It's not today.
But, so, well...
In the future, just can we start talking about really incentive about for the people who cannot keep up with this historic building? Can they apply for some kind of incentive? Are you open to the conversation, at least?
Absolutely.
Sure, this building isn't historic yet.
Yeah, if I could engage, I would say that I absolutely, completely agree with you. I think that one thing that's gone into conversation has been the idea of potentially doing a revolving loan fund. I think that that was something that Councilor Mo talked with me about today. One thing I think is important to note in the context of this particular property, Mayor Protem, is that the reason that the property owner has not had access to all of the resources that historic preservation offers, whether that's tax benefits, whether that's granting procedure, is because it does not already have that designation. So they've made the choice to go without that designation and thus to go without the assistance that we offer them.
I understand that, Councilor, and the only problem that I'm talking about is not enough. Whatever now offer to historic preservation, which is keeping the outside and doing that, is not enough for me as a person to, like, to do this, because, you know, just now, I'm keeping up with the inside, it costs mostly than the outside, and also, like, the tax, I understand about the tax incentive and everything, that's not enough. We need really to have, if we're going to do this all the time, we need to have a line item on the budget about historic preservation. If they needed, they use it. If they don't need it, is there?
Yeah, I'm 100% with you.
So, we have an Historic Preservation Fund. I would support increasing that. I also think that we could enhance our Historic Preservation staff time to help people connect them with funds, we're just limited on that. But I think it's a, again, like Councilor Dunn said, those things are available for people who are historic, and those monies are there. And so this person would be eligible for a lot of money for the upkeep that you're right to be concerned about. They won't be without that designation.
I understand. I'm talking like in general, and even the current people who have already been designated, the future, everyone, because the way that they talk about it earlier, and the way that I understood, it is mostly for the outside and some inside, but it's not a lot. And if I have, for example, because the building is old, we have many things, like, many bad things happened to the building and need to, need a big maintenance, and I don't have money, and, you know, so to keep up with this building, and it is, that's why the city should help on those kind of cases.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, because somebody will say, "Okay, you want me to keep this historic, and this is an old building, you know, I cannot take care of it anymore." That's why I'm, again, is making it historic. But if the city is the one who going to give, like, "Oh, no problem, if you have a major issue happen at your building, and which is historic," the city will have some kind of incentive to help with the cost of the, of the maintenance, if it's really huge.
And I know, actually, for a fact that we have a lot of properties in town that are like that. A great example of that is the Bloom House on Summit Street. It's a historically designated home, requires a significant level of review, but it being run by a community nonprofit co-op that generally goes towards affordable housing, it's really difficult for that organization, River City Housing Collective, I used to live there, to actually finance the types of improvements that are necessary to increase quality of life and increase the quality of the properties. So, I am certainly on board with us either, you know, creating some sort of committee or, you know, something like that, whatever, to, you know, better assess what the good potential programs and opportunities would be for people to increase incentive. But I don't think that that is the same cushion that we have today.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand that, Don Drew, you don't have to tell me that. This, I understand it completely. I want to feel you guys are open to the conversation, because I feel like this is huge building, and maybe they cannot take care of it in the futures, like, and if we have, like, we can discuss something that, not only for this, for everything, for all the historic preservation that we have.
Absolutely.
So, that's what make me decide.
Yeah.
So you're saying...
Well, Mayor Protem, I think we have experts in place currently, and that is our Historic Preservation Commission, right? They are the individuals who, their job is to have the expertise, even in, like, particular sub-neighborhoods, to come forward and tell us, you know, what the assets are that need to be protected and make recommendations relating to those. I don't, you know, I have not seen a case as compelling as this one for the cultural significance for the landmarking that has come up in this way before the City Council. There are many, many other older buildings, but I think when you look at the cultural significance that has been, and the way in which it's been presented to us, the way in which the community has amplified that understanding for what the significance of this property is, and not just the front half of that building, but the entirety of the property, you know, learning about the history of what is now the laundromat, what that used to be, what the portion in the back, you know, on the north side used to be. I think that's, we have those experts, we have the Historic Preservation Fund, we have staff who facilitate connecting property owners with incentives, not just from the city, but at the state level as well, and educating folks about things like the historic tax credits. So I completely agree that that's a thing we should do, and I think we're doing it, and I think this particular rezoning recommendation fits really well with the plans that we have in place and the way in which we can execute that. So that's why I'm in favor of this landmark designation, historic designation, because I think, you know, it really does match those things. So I agree with what you're saying, and I think it's, I think it's there, I think it's right in front of us right now.
Yeah, but, you know, exactly, because you said, "This is not only the front building, this is, everything is historic." You know, that's adding up of, like, old buildings that this, that the owner have to keep up with. That's why I'm asking for, like, just looking into our historic reservations, you know, like, whatever benefit we have right now for the owner and how we can improve it.
So, like, maybe looking at, like, what the fund is and looking at the demand and seeing if it's, like, scoped correctly?
Yes, and see, like, if we need to improve, if we need to find another kind of fund for certain things, because there is limitation for everything that we have.
If I could ask Jeff a question real quick. How much staff time do we put towards historic preservation every, every week? Do we know?
Well, we have one part-time dedicated associate planner, Jessica Bristow's here, and then who receives support from our senior planner as well, Anne Russett.
Sure, so, like, dedicated time, though, probably about, like, 20 hours, roughly?
It's hard, hard to say, it's going to depend on the workload at the time, but Jessica's the only person that's solely focused on historic preservation.
Okay.
And can I ask the commissioner a question?
Oh, you can.
Yeah, I just want to ask, like, David Isings, for the, you know, long time ago, I was in the council, I think I was the only one in the council at that time, I'm not remembering my take, but I think the commissioner come up with some good ideas, which is, we voted down. And I, today after, I went and reviewed what we have before, I think is matching what I'm asking right now. Do you remember this, or...
I was not, I don't think, on the commission...
Isings?
Kevin.
It was Kevin, it was Kevin Boyd, who was the chair before me.
Yeah, Kevin Boyd was the chair, yeah.
But there were some ideas, and I know one of them was the revolving, kind of a revolving loan, which is also something available through banks, if you have, if you own a property, you can often receive a loan that's valued at, you know, a large percentage of what, of, like, the tax credits that would, that would carry you over until you receive those credits. So there's a lot of, there's, there's just quite a few options that put together can create a significant financial benefit to the owner of a historic property. And I provided a, just kind of a list that demonstrates a few of them. I spoke to dozens of property owners in Iowa who've been through this process, who have found it to be rewarding without any regrets, and, you know, we know the resources are there. There are consultants who you can work with, who, who do the, you know, the actual physical work affiliated with those businesses. So, the resources are there, and I will certainly do what I can to help, you know, provide information about that for anybody who needs it.
Yeah, because I also reach out to some owners of, like, existing historic reservation building, and they have also that kind of worried about keeping up all the time with maintenance.
Well, Iowa City doesn't have a robust historic preservation plan, you know? I mean, we could, they're comparable cities in Iowa, Dubuque, Cedar Rapids, and they do have maybe more of a, they're larger, you know, they have more buildings. But I, we could be doing more.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, so, can you just be, if you'd be willing to clarify, like, where you're at right now, in terms of this item?
Yeah, if you guys are open to conversations and, like, let us make the historic preservation benefit stronger and look into it. Okay, I'm seeing enough people, so I'm going to vote yes for this.
Any other comments by council?
I think we have what we need, but I am curious, I don't fully understand your hesitancy, I guess, Mayor Teague.
Yeah. I guess I've shared, you know, previous meetings, my concerns, my thoughts, and at this moment, I still don't feel comfortable with the, with all of the answers that I've received. I think they're, you even talked about needing a kind of overhaul over, you know, the historic preservation process. And so for me, I'm sitting with some of those challenges that I just can't seem to get over for this one. So, it doesn't come easy, because there's, there are experts that have spoke out, that I fully trust. These are some of the same experts that came before us in the past that I've, you know, supported. This one, for me, just seems, there's too many elements to it for me to feel comfortable. And I would not be genuine to myself and to what I believe my representation of this community is if I sat here and just voted with it. So, I recognize this a hard position to be in, a hard decision to make, but that's, you know, why we have seven different counselors that, you know, are different in their thought processes, and, and so, we'll go with that. Roll call, please.
Sella?
Yes.
Teague?
No.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Absolutely.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. We're on to item number nine B. This is the preliminary plat and final plat for Highlander Development Fifth Edition. Resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Highlander Development Fifth Edition. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess.
All right, and welcome, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor Council, Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood Development Services. This is a preliminary and final plat for Highlander Development Fifth Edition, shown here in the white outline, located north of I-80, east of Dodge Street. This is a replat of a fourth edition. You can barely make out in the white outline on the right-hand side of this square where the lines of that fourth edition were previously. It had been platted to include more commercial lots than what it, fifth edition would, so it's basically removing some lots and vacating the streets that were laid out previously. It would maintain one commercial lot, two outlots for future development, and outlot for stormwater. This shows the zoning of that lot as well. This is the plat boundary, showing, as I said, the consolidation of some of those formerly platted lots, the addition of some additional land as outlets, and the maintaining of an outlet just for stormwater. When we review preliminary and final plots together, we use the criteria of compliance with the comprehensive plan and with applicable subdivision codes for subdividing. In this case, there's no change in use proposed. This land was rezoned in 2015 for CO1. There's no request to change the zoning at this point, simply to replat the lines for development at this time or future development. We do review for the necessary subdivision design standards and everything that they are proposing, and this plat does meet our current standards. Development of those outlets would require another subdivision in the future to divide those down farther. There is necessary infrastructure, infrastructure in place for the one lot that they are still proposing with this, and Public Works is working with them to ensure that there's adequate stormwater management as well. Just a little back history on this property, it was annexed in the 60s and 70s, it's been through multiple rezonings over the years. As I said, in 2015, it was rezoned to CO1. There was a fourth plat, and then at this time, they're undergoing the replating for a fifth addition, as I said, to consolidate some of those lots. Any development on this lot would still require site plan and building permits. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff recommended approval of the proposed plat, and at their April 3 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with that, with no conditions. As I said, approval of the combined preliminary and final will result in the creation of one commercial lot, two outlets for future development, and one outlet for stormwater. Happy to answer questions.
Couple real quick ones. The outlets reserved for future development, would that necessarily be some more commercial, or would that possibly be multifamily residential, or just any, any ideas?
So it's currently zoned for commercial development, so unless they wanted to go through a rezoning, that's what we would expect to see. And they would have to replant the street network and all the things to support any future development.
Which probably, then, my second question was, this is just a matter of curiosity, I think, I don't have any problems with this was presented before us, but at what point does a second means of egress and ingress? I know that, I just happen to know that just stretches back quite a ways.
Yeah, there's not a specific trigger, I think in this case, it would be a case-by-case evaluation to make sure there was a safe means of circulation for what's being proposed. Certainly, the fourth plat that they're consolidating had a street network that we thought was adequate, so you'd likely see something very similar.
Okay, that's, just curious. Thank you.
Here are no other questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? And also, if you're online, please raise your hand, your virtual hand, that is. Are you a part of the development team?
I am actually. I'm with Navigate Homes.
Great, welcome.
Okay, so my name is Gina Landau. I'm with Navigate Homes. We are the ones that are replating this. As you all probably know, there's not a lot of development going on in that area anymore. We have had a long term farm lease tenant farming the land. And the plan is to sell that land to the long term farmer. We don't see any potential for this in the future as far as commercial. But the outlots were platted for future development. So there is always that potential. So we're not taking that out or changing the zoning or anything like that. But that is really Navigate's goal, to sell this farmland off, basically. Don't need to get into too much other stuff unless you have any questions. But that's really the impetus for this whole replat.
That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
Appreciate the explanation. I wish we had more commercial development there, but understand where we're at.
Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number 10A, which is our fiscal year 2025 utility and parking rates public hearing. And this is the ordinance amending Title III in title finances, taxation and fees. Chapter four entitled schedule of fees, rates, charges, bonds, fines and penalties. This is the second consideration. And could I get a motion, please?
So moved Mo.
Second, Burgess.
All right, moved by Mo, second by Burgess. And public discussion, anyone want to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand, seeing no one online, seeing no one in person, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. Item 10B is 2024 bond resolution. Resolution directing sale of $10,140,000 of general bond obligation series 2024. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, second by Saleh, and welcome Nicole.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Nicole Davies, Finance Director. So we had our bond sale this morning for our GO bonds for the year. And Maggie Berger from Spear Financial, our municipal advisor, is online to walk you guys through those results. You should, in the late handouts, what's the packet of information?
Thank you very much, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome Maggie.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, we did, as Nicole mentioned, we did take bids this morning on $10,140,000 of general obligation bonds, series 2024. We are happy to report that we had seven bidders participate, which is a very good number for the city. Also, in a time where we have obviously higher interest rates than in the past, we are recommending out of those seven bidders that we would recommend the low bidder from Janie Montgomery Scott out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And their interest rate, their true interest rate is a 3.0656%. The the seven range from that low of 3.06 to 3.19. So on $10 million, we would consider that to be very close or tight bidding. Not very, you know, only 13 basis points from the top to the bottom. We also got to, I wanted to notate that last year in 2023, we did also have seven bids. But in the prior years in '22, we only had four bids. And in '21, we only had four bids. We're going to eliminate 2020 from that mix just because that was an odd year with the sale happening right after we sort of went into lockdown for the pandemic. As part of this process, your city officials put together a great presentation that they informed Moody's Investor Service for their investment rating. They did about an hour long presentation with question and answers, giving all sorts of information about not only the city, but what's going on in and around the city as well with school district, projects, developments, et cetera. It was a great presentation. We're happy to report that the city has retained its AAA rating. The AAA rating is the highest rating that you can get from Moody's Investor Services or for any of the investment houses. So we're very happy to see that. One thing that always leads to your great rating, and we've done a little highlighting in your packet, is, you know, strong fund balances and cash ratios, healthy days of cash on hand when it comes like to your water department, which also still has a rating outstanding. Now, the water rating, just for your knowledge, is a double A2 rating, which is two notches below the AAA. And that is not surprising to us because that is a water revenue. It's a water utility. It is not taxation like your general obligation bonds. It's based on a revenue system. We have outlined at the second to the last page of our packet, the bids that were received. So Janie Montgomery Scott, they started with one interest rate in 2025 at a 6%. They then had subsequent interest rates at 5% through 2031. And then the last two or three years, they were at a 4% interest rate. That's really where we're seeing them. They are giving you a premium of over $600,000. Again, where we're seeing the market, which basically means that the yields are going to be something lower than this amount. And there needs to be a premium given so that they can buy that interest rate down into that 3%. We have given you your final debt service schedule. Most of the bidders were giving you five and 4% interest rates. But the final debt service schedule also notes that these bonds are callable after the June 1st of 2031 payment or maturity. At that time, if interest rates are lower, you'd have an opportunity to refinance. If interest rates were higher, you can just continue to pay on the bonds as they are outstanding. Otherwise, that's also the time that you would be able to pay those bonds off early, either in full or in part. I know that sometimes you ask questions for us about the the interest rate and how that is affected by that AAA rating. So I did want to give you a little bit of statistics. Over the last 15 to 20 days, just in our market alone and sort of surrounding, you know, the Iowa City, that that eastern Iowa corridor, we have, we have seen interest rates ranging from a city that is in the Lynn County area that did not have a rating. So they did not go out for a rating. They're not a regular issuer. They do not have a rating outstanding. They came in at a 3.69% interest rate. So again, they're about 63 basis points higher than your 3.06. We then have a city in your corridor in the Lynn County area that was sold yesterday. They have an A plus rating, meaning they're in the single A category. So they're about five notches below you guys on the scale. That interest rate was a 3.6%. And then we had an issue about 15 days ago in the Black Hawk County area. And that had a double A2 rating. Now, interest rates were slightly higher a couple of weeks ago. They've they've sort of come down a little bit, but 15 days ago, that interest rate was a 3.51. So we definitely were seeing the benefits of that AAA rating today by getting you all the way down to that low 3% mark. This is pretty comparable to last year's interest rate. You know, last year's interest rate in May was 2.85 for the city. That's where you did have seven bidders. But I will remind you, there was another 75 basis point increase in the Federal Reserve interest rate from, you know, this time in May to, you know, now. And so really to only see, you know, you receiving about a 20 basis point increase over last year's, we think is just a phenomenal interest rate. You've you've really set the bar low today for future interest rates that we've got for some sales coming up. So with that, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So that I understand terminology is true interest rate, the gross interest less the discount or premium? Is that how?
It is. It is. Yeah, it's either, it's either plus the discount or it's plus the premium or less the discount. Correct. It is. It is not only the interest rates that are bid per maturity, but it also considers in that discount or premium that is either taken or provided.
Question about our Moody's rating. I I noticed on here, it indicates scorecard indicated outcome, and that's AA2.
Correct.
And the one that we got was was the AAA, which is, which is great. In, so two part question here. I mean, what is the, what is your belief that there is the cause for the difference between those? And secondly, how do our assessed ratings, you know, whether relating to economy, institutional framework, all those other things, you know, the things that we got? Like BAA, AA, a lot of those different ones, but not all AAA. How are we performing year over year, at least year over whatever the relative period is? Are we improving? Are we declining?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question. So the scorecard indicated, they take your audited financial, they take census information. They take some demographic information that comes out from that census calculations, and they put into a scorecard. And that truly is that scorecard indication. Then the committee, there is a committee at Moody's that holds committee meetings. And they go into that committee meeting with the analyst. The analyst is the one that has had a presentation from your administration. They've got all kinds of detailed notes. They've got notes that, you know, maybe feed what we're seeing in the audited financials, right? It's talking about demographics, talking about growth in valuation, things like that. That's, you know, the scorecard indicated is truly just what the scorecard says. The committee gets to make the final decision. And for the past couple, three years, about two or three years, you have been in the scorecard indicated outcome of a double A2. So about two notches below the AAA assignment. But the committee and in our conversation with the analyst after, the committee feels strongly that the city is still very actively growing, that the city's cash balances are still very hearty. So the one thing, though, that you see up there is the scorecard. So what these these scores on the side indicate with, they're, they're in the single A category, the AAA category, double A, and then the B double A. So remember that they are putting you on a scale that is global, meaning across your nation. You're being compared against other cities, counties and school districts that may fall in that AAA category, may have that highest rating in the land. So from a resident income ratio, Iowa City falls in the B double A category, meaning that you're even below investment grade when you compare you to other AAA categories, AAA credits across the nation. That is not uncommon in Iowa especially. We know that our resident income levels in Iowa are lower than across the rest of the nation. But to coincide with that, we also know that maybe property valuation taxation is also lower. So there's a little bit of a trade off there, although we have lower resident incomes, our cost of living is typically lower as well. We see full value per capita only in the single A category, you know, just to just to name a couple of them. And that's really because, again, our values are, you know, we can probably buy homes for 300,000 or 400,000, where those same homes in other states may be, you know, 6, 7, 800,000 or a million dollars. So so you're not getting a full valuation that across the board globally, other AAA credits are seeing. And so that's, that's really what that determination is. I will say, we do have a one, I think, one more AAA on this list of scorecard than you did last year. Again, the available fund balance ratio and liquidity ratio has always been very, very strong. I believe their fixed cost ratio, that's a pretty good AAA. And and that's good because that just means that your your fixed costs are not rising. They're staying pretty level. They're staying right in line with with other AAA credits across the nation. I don't know if that answers your question, but but that's sort of the way that we look at this.
Yeah, yeah, for the most part. Did we see any metrics decline? We you said that we had one improve.
Yeah, no, when I looked at it, we did not see any metrics declining from last year, year over year.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just have a question with, say, debt services schedule?
Yes.
And, you know, what do you mean by carbon? I know the interest and total principal plus interest. Does you mean that the 12 million is the final thing that we pay? Or I don't understand this. And also what's the carbon means, 6%, 5%? Yeah.
Yeah, so the coupon is the interest rate per the maturity. So you probably go to the bank and get like a home mortgage or a car loan, and it's a flat 5% interest rate, 6% interest rate throughout the entire schedule. Bonds are sold as investments. And so there are investors out there looking, and and people are saying, for the coupon, I want to know that if I buy the mature $2 million for, and it's going to come due, and I'm going to get paid off in June 1st of 2025. In today's market, I want 6% on my return. I want to know that I'm getting a 6% because I could walk into the bank and possibly invest in a CD and get five, five and three quarters, et cetera. So the coupons are truly the interest rates assigned, and they're really investor driven. They're what the market is demanding out of interest rates to be able to invest in these. So underwriters who are buying these, Janie Montgomery Scott is looking and saying, investors, what do you have to have out of these deals? What kind of investment rate do you have to have? And as as we go down the road in time, what you're seeing in the schedules, we started a six, we go to a five, and then we end up those last three years at a four. That's really the investor saying, we do believe interest rates are going to go down. So we do believe that as time goes on over these next 10 years, we probably are going to see a decline in interest rate. And we're willing to take less of an interest rate in those further year outs because probably by then, the Federal Reserve has moved, the short term borrowing rates have come down. And I'd still be holding on to a really good investment at 5% or even 4% going forward. Then I don't know if you you asked, but the fiscal total on the far right is the amount of debt service that you're going to pay every year. And the city does a great job as they budget. They tell us what they want that first amount to be, based on what projections they have of debt coming off. That, you know, that they can afford to pay in the debt service without making massive changes to your debt service. And then we have taken the approach with the city at their request of having then level principal payments, which means the debt service annually is going to get smaller and smaller. And that really affords you the opportunity to bring additional debt on in the future without having major fluctuations in that debt service amount.
Okay, thank you.
One question about, I assume, revenue, which is fueled by growth, is a key part of the positive credit rating. Does statewide property tax reform actually threaten municipalities across Iowa?
Yeah, it very well could. We have had that conversation with Moody's. Moody's is fully aware of that legislation. Moody's is not in a position at this point in time to take action. They've they've sort of stated to us off the record that they're not really in a position to analyze anyone from a downgrade situation in relation to that property tax reform. Because we are just going to be entering into fiscal year 25, which is effectively the first year of that property tax reform. And so I think that question will be a good question when we look at the scorecard next year, the year after and the year after that, and to see where on that metrics, if there is any effect in that property tax reform. But but Moody's is very aware of it. All the other in, uh, rating agencies are. We've had numerous conversations. They've definitely read that legislation, and they do feel like it could have some pressure because Moody's is always interested in revenue raising abilities. What areas of your budget could additional revenue be raised? And and always property tax is one of those. And if there are more limitations on the amount that you can levy in the property tax, that's definitely something they'll be looking at in the future.
All right. Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
All right. If no more questions for Nicole or Maggie, we're going to ask if the, if there's anyone from the public that have any comments to make. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
Just want to thank the finance department for this. It's incredible work and saves taxpayer dollars every day.
Absolutely. Roll call, please.
Just for clarity's sake, what you'll be voting on tonight is the revised resolution that is found in the late. that is found in the late packet that incorporates the bid results that came from this morning, not the blank one earlier, just for the record. Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10C is tobacco permit moratorium. This is a resolution establishing moratorium on the issuance of new tobacco permits in Iowa City, Iowa until January 1st, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter. She's closer. And we'll turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the request of council, I've drafted the resolution imposing a moratorium on the issuance of new tobacco permits. I think council understands, but just for the benefit of the public, we're talking about new permits, not renewals. The renewals are now going to be scheduled not for May 7th tonight, which is what I originally thought, but instead for June 4th. And this will not interfere with that as long as there are no changes in ownership. If there is a change in ownership, that requires a new permit, and that would not be allowed. The moratorium runs through January 1st. Before then, we would meet in a work session with council to discuss options, to see what you folks would like to see done. And then following that input and guidance from you, I'll draft an ordinance to effectuate those changes and those rules and those policy changes, and put it forward to your vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How much time do you need before you're ready for a work session?
Well, I think if you would give me one meeting off, I think that would probably... I'm not, sorry, that maybe came off wrong.
No, it hit right.
By the June 4th meeting, which is not the next meeting, but the subsequent one, I think I'd be happy to present some options for you folks to consider. Obviously, that comes with a caveat. I don't really know what might otherwise be scheduled for work session discussion and so forth.
Sure.
So at the soonest, June 4th, but we can look at what else we have and schedule accordingly.
Sure. Right.
Sounds good.
Is it, so based on our earlier conversations, is it fair, instead of putting our city attorney's feet to the fire, to say that he could have a couple of sessions? Because we have some things to discuss. So there's not...
July.
Yeah, July seems to make sense.
Okay.
That way, then. Although, by the end of this session would be great. Thanks.
8:30.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the city attorney? All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Yes, welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Belinda Bates. I am from Iowa City, and this is a question off the top of my head. I didn't come here to discuss this. Does this permit moratorium affect the sale of other products such as kratom and other products that are vaped? It says vapor products, but is that limited to nicotine vapor products? Or does it include this raft of other weird things that are sold in these stores?
And that question, you can just speak to the council, and the council can determine if they want to take any response to any questions that people state.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone else? From the public, seeing no one? Council discussion?
Can I respond to that question?
Absolutely. You have an option.
Yeah, I am totally open to doing stuff on kratom. And there's also some other concerning areas with a number of the shops. That's stuff that I personally have talked with other counselors about, as well as have talked briefly with the city manager about. And I believe, Eric, we've talked about that too. Have we?
I'm sorry, about kratom?
Yeah, about kratom or other types of stuff.
The, you know, the, most of the vape products and alternative nicotine through, you know, electronic cigarettes, and that's all covered by the same tobacco permit. I don't know about kratom.
Well, I guess the question is rather like, can we ban the sale of something?
Yes, unless we're preempted by the state in some fashion or another, through your home rule authority, you can ban something.
So I would just say that I think a thorough investigation while we do this, you know, process as to where we figure out with tobacco permitting, we should also look into, you know, what we can do about other things that are going on.
Sure.
Just to be more broad, because there's a lot of bad stuff going on.
Yeah.
For real. So, yes. Not as part of this policy. This is not going to affect that. But I think council is relatively open to investigating and figuring out a solution.
Is, I guess, is council open to that? I'm not sure.
I think, personally, I think that the presentation that the city attorney makes in perhaps July, it would be interesting to sort of understand those limits of what we can regulate defensively. And of course, we need to articulate why we're doing it, which it's labeled here. But I think having time to sort of answer to kratom and vape products would be helpful in that conversation, because I agree, it's problematic. We know there are minors who have easy access to it. If we can do something about that, we should try.
I agree.
And this is just to establish a moratorium, right?
Yes, we are just establishing the moratorium tonight. We're not, yeah, that's it tonight.
Yeah, and we decide after you give us a presentation.
Right. In July, if that's when it comes, I'll offer some options for you folks, and then I'll wait for your guidance. That's what you'd like to do, and then I'll draft an ordinance responsive to the guidance I've received from you, and then that'll come back to you to vote.
Thank you. And this is, again, you mentioned area for establishing new permit, right? Not like existing or renewing.
Right. In, we're currently scheduled for the June 4th meeting to have the renewals. And I say the renewals because they all expire on June 30th, all of them. They're all annual permits. And so all the renewals are going to be coming forward unless one of the applicants is late. Kelly's indicated that if that's the case, then we'll squeeze them into the last meeting in June. But hopefully, they're all on the June 4th meeting. And so, yeah, those will go through without any problems with this moratorium. Yeah.
Sure.
Hearing no other comments, roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10D is Riverside Drive Pedestrian Bridge at Iowa Avenue Rehabilitation Project. Resolution set in a public hearing on May 21st, 2024 on project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Riverside Drive Pedestrian Bridge at Iowa Avenue Rehabilitation Project, directing city clerk to post, to publish notice of said hearing and directing the city engineer to place said project manual on file for public inspection. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Mo?
I can, Saleh.
All right, and we're going to ask for our city manager to start this conversation.
This is a little different for you. We're actually going to ask you to reject this item tonight. So this is the rehabilitation of the Iowa Avenue Pedestrian Bridge, the kind of the circular kind of curlicue over on Iowa Avenue there over Riverside Drive. The nature of this work is such that it needs to be done in the summer when the student population is down a little bit because of the just number of people crossing. And unfortunately, the lead time on some of the products for construction aren't going to allow for us to bid this right now and get the project constructed this summer. So what we'd like to do is have you reject this item tonight, and we'll rebid it in the fall, and then it'll be ready for construction. That'll give the contractors plenty of time to get their orders in with several months' notice, and then they'll be ready to start that project in the summer of 2025.
I know. I'm always the one, at least recently, who's objected to timing of construction projects and inconvenience, but are we concerned at all about the safety of that bridge? No. I just remember the pictures from the last presentation were a bit concerning.
Oh, the engineers speak to that.
Yeah, sorry. I'm like, looking at Jeff, but yes, thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Jason Havel, city engineer. We're really not concerned about it structurally. I think more than anything, there's some spalling that continues to occur, so we'll kind of watch it like we've been doing. We may have to go out there and address some minor issues, but from a safety standpoint, we really don't have concerns.
Okay. Thanks.
In line with that question, if it does, if spalling pieces are falling on people underneath it, because you could go under pieces of concrete on that bridge, and that bridge needs to be closed, how do people cross there?
That was, is part of the reason why we want the work to happen during the summers, because there's really not a good way to do that. There's not a good detour route. You potentially would have an option to establish an at-grade crossing, which comes with a lot of changes that would have to happen in some costs.
Okay.
Yeah, not our preferred option, and again, that would be probably down the option list a little ways. But there would be some options we could explore if it came to that, but we don't anticipate that it will.
And it's your opinion, too, that this is fully not accessible, the way that this ramp is structured, as I understand it? But it's existing, so we're continuing to move forward with maintaining it?
Correct. If we were going to replace it, it would not be able to go back the way it is today.
At what point in your judgment is it, we have to replace it because of its limited accessibility?
It would be more than the project that we have proposed. What we're proposing really is more concrete repairs around the edge of the walkways, just to kind of address that spalling more than anything. So I think if you're looking at, you know, a complete replacement of decks and structures and that kind of thing, then it would be a different project. But this is really more of a maintenance repair project.
Okay.
Great. Thank you much. All right. Any other questions or comments by staff? I mean, by council? Anyone from the public like to address this topic? I don't even know if we went there yet. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion? We already did that, didn't we? Yeah, because it was Alter. Oh. Okay. I know, it's not 8 o'clock. All right, roll call, please.
Harmsen? No. Thank you for remembering. Mo?
No.
Saleh?
No.
Teague?
No.
Alter?
No.
Burgess?
No.
Dunn?
This is a really tough one, Eric. Oh, no.
Motion fails zero to one, zero to seven. Zero to seven. All right. Here we are on to our next item, which is council appointments. 11A is Ad-Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2024. There is a gender balance requirement of one female, which I think takes our options down a little bit. I did want to mention that Selena Martin, Campbell Martin is no longer in our area, so she couldn't be considered. I would suggest Lubna Mohammed.
I agree.
She was one that I...
Yeah. Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Well, we got four. So can I get a motion to appoint?
So moved.
All right, Lubna Mohammed, moved by Dunn, seconded by Saleh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We're on to 12. Announcements of vacancies previous. Ad-Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Community Police Review Board, two vacancies to fill a four-year term. Historic Preservation Commission at Large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Willan Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Housing and Community Development Commission, these vacancies, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number 13 is city council information.
Happy Mother's Day this Sunday.
Absolutely. All right. We're going to move on to item number 14, which is report on items from city staff. We'll start with our city manager's office.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
City attorney's office.
Nothing for me either, mayor.
All right, and city clerk?
Nothing for me.
All right, great. Item number 15.
So moved.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'm going to go back into work session after, yeah. So motion to adjourn.
Second. Saleh?
Second.
Moved by Saleh, seconded by Dunn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.